We have no invitation tonight, so we'll just go with the Pledge of Allegiance on three. One, two, three.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic. Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Okay, so the mayor's welcome. You're all welcome to be here. This is your house. This is our, this is our government. We are the people. Time flies when you're having fun. We started out four years ago. We had COVID. Then we had three hurricanes. The city manager and I have been there every, all the time, all the way. Staff and the people of Benita Springs have never failed to be there for all of us. We all make America the best there is. Keep God's spirit of love. Thank you. Okay. Approval of a special meeting agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon. Councilmember Carr.
Here, yes.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic. Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Okay. How do we do this? Do you want to introduce him?
I can, but we'd ask first if you can confirm approval of the consent. First, you have public, public comment on the, for agenda items is the first item.
Okay, Mike, you read that?
Public comment.
No, public comment?
Public comment. Is there anyone for public comment?
On agenda items. Seeing none.
Seeing none. We'll move then to item seven.
Okay.
That would be the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Number eight, city attorney?
I have nothing.
You have nothing. I'm a city manager. I hope you have something for us.
I do. Thank you, mayor and council. First, if we could, I would ask your approval to ratify the City of Benita Springs Resolution 24-76, which declared the local state of emergency in advance of Hurricane Milton. Additionally, we have Resolution 2480 extending the local state of emergency and executive orders 24-02, 24-03, and 20-04.
So move.
Second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Thank you, mayor and council. At this time, we wanted to provide an update on our activities in response to Hurricane Milton. First, I would ask that your emergency management director, Tony Backers, come forward for a presentation, and then we'll be hearing briefly from each of our community partners and some additional staff as well.
Very good. Hi, Tony.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the record, Tony Backers, Director of Neighborhood Services and Emergency Management. I'm going to run through a PowerPoint. There's pictures on which is probably a lot more interesting than listen to me just talk. So this is kind of a general overview of our Milton response. I apologize for my technical failings. So every year I do an update on emergency management and our preparation, and I always cover off that we got the four phases and we deal with mitigation is always called blue skies. It's 12 months of the year to reduce impacts for future events. It's an ongoing thing. And then prepare, respond, and recover. So this is, I put this up because it kind of shows how the prepare and the respond do actually come in and how it comes into practice. And thankfully, we've got our emergency services partners here tonight, local partners, as well as BSU who can speak to their role within it. So in prepare, we're monitoring with this, and this is an emergency plan, but this is obviously weather related. So the monitoring of the storm is incredibly important, and there are people out there who watch every single weather broadcast, news broadcast, and they're looking at that cone, and they're looking at it from an invest to a tropical storm to a hurricane. And the monitoring of it is very important. It's done at multiple levels. We get primarily, most of our information comes from the National Hurricane Center or it comes from the National Weather Service. So we prepare our emergency management protocols. Our emergency operations plan goes into effect, but there's prior assessment throughout the city incorporating many, many of the departments and employees within the city. So vulnerable areas, and when we say vulnerable areas, what we're talking about with regards to this is areas that are susceptible to severe or extreme weather, whether it be a mobile home park, whether it be a low-lying area susceptible to flooding, areas that have had repetitive issues with this. So storm drains, which public works, and Imperial River where we have somewhat of a unique situation is when we're dealing with not just the incoming hurricane, we would deal with the sheet flow following it. And that was key on this one, and you, most people know what the level is going to get to, so we watch that as well constantly going up. And we communicate throughout this, and I can, I can say that the communication between all the partner agencies was fantastic on this one, absolutely fantastic. It always is, but this one really stood out between Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, BSU, Lee County EOC, including our neighboring counties as well. It was, it was an outstanding communication exercise. And then there's outreach and education. So our communications department gets as much information out as they possibly can to the public through a variety of different means. They're doing it through e-blasts, Facebook Live, there's press conference, email, as many different forms as we possibly can, as well as we do outreach and education with staff. And we was fortunate enough to have some members of council come out with us during this, during the preparation, and walk with our staff, which was wonderful. So with Milton, October the ninth, there, it became a tropical storm. It was the Saturday. Once it becomes a tropical storm, everything gets more ramped up. The EOC starts to get in a higher level of preparation. At that point, there was a lot of rain forecast for the weekend. Probably everybody remembers. The Imperial River was at 9.8 feet, which is high, and high rainfall coming. And at that point, they were calling it Tuesday into Wednesday. And if anybody does follow this stuff very, very closely, the cone changes, the dates change, the times change on this stuff. And it is very fluid, and you know, this is Saturday, and they're predicting Tuesday, Thursday. So staff is monitoring, is constantly sending out as much information as they possibly can. So prior to impact, so as late as we can go, our staff will be again monitoring National Hurricane Center, National Weather Service, still coordinating with partner agencies, the Fire Department, and you know, paramedics, police. They're out there past what our staff are, but our staff are out there, and they were going around talking to people who were in these areas, just advising them that there's an evacuation order. This is where you live, doing the best they can to get as many people to go into shelters or into a safer location. And it's door-to-door. It's literally walking the areas, doing the best they can to get them out there. And there's just some, some different pictures up there. So the impact was the ninth and the 10th. It finally hit the Wednesday into the Thursday. And essential staff go to the South Lee Geographic Division out beneath the ground at the Fire Department. We do have staff that at that point then are deployed to the EOC as a liaison. And throughout the storm, while it's not safe to be going out, continued monitoring, continued coordination, many phone calls between all of the people, and disseminating as much information as we can get out. And it's important that we do get, you know, good information out because rumor control and things like that are also a problem. And at that point, they were predicting five to eight feet surge. It was going backwards and forwards. We were in the cone, we're out the cone, and it was a watch and wait. So when it hit, it was, as you can see, the top right graphic there is Imperial River. It was getting very high. It was getting pretty close up there towards 12 feet at some point. And once it's gone, as soon as it is safe to do so, the city staff get out and they try and give an overview. For all the acronyms I use when I say FIDA and IDA, it's an overview. So the city knows what the extent of the damage is within, within the city, and to catalog it so it can go to the county, so the people that are looking at this have an idea. Further down, you'll see like what the IDA map is, and it's categorized. But people who are not here get a very good and accurate representation from staff going around monitoring and logging. If you can see there, the middle graphic on the right-hand side, you can see clear watermarks on properties, and it gives a good overview of the extent of damage, and it, and it helps generate resources should we need them. And again, this impacted the entire west coast of Florida. It was pretty devastating. So resources are, were very, very good throughout the state, but if we can put them where they need to be and show who's got what, this is the best way of doing it. The, is an overall assessment of our facilities, city facilities. Nicole with Parks and Rec, her staff are out there assessing what the damage is. And Matt was out with Arlene, and they're out there as well, looking at the road conditions. And it's basically to see, you, there would be press releases, please stay at home. One of those came out from us. It would be appreciated if people could stay at home until noon. It gives staff the ability to provide an accurate representation of when it's safe to go out and start driving around. Some of these roads, as we all know, and you can see the pictures there, Hickory was, was, was pretty grim. It looked like the moon out there. There's sand everywhere. It's, it got hit. The response continued and continues. And when you're looking at, you know, the extent of sand that's piled up there, there's a picture there of one of our staff, city staff, lifting a porta potty. We do as best we can in preparation to go around and make sure everybody has got removed what they should get removed. I will say that nowhere is perfect, and unfortunately porta potties tip over in the wind. And when you look at that, you can see again, it was the damage, we were very fortunate compared to other areas, but we certainly did sustain damage. And the IDAs that we're doing is the initial damage assessment. And this is, this was completed in just over 72 hours by city staff. And I can see I probably should have used a better font when I made this PowerPoint because it's not the easiest to read. But the orange is major damage, and that's going to be 18 inches, for simplified purposes, 18 inches plus of, on the first floor of water. So it's, it's over the electrical outlets. It would be considered, orange would be major. And then you're going to go, yellow is minor, which is three to 18 inches. And then you've got affected, which is less than three inches. And it can be in non-residential area, it can be in a garage space, that kind of thing. So I know I've previously discussed, and I believe after Helane, and I mentioned how many affected properties were. That, I try to steer away from that because I can get confused with the actual category. And black is no observable damage. If anyone's wondering why are we going around putting no observable damage, it's kind of to put a boundary for a visual representation of where did get hit. And we can look and say, okay, this is kind of the boundary of where the water extended. You will see that there are some green areas and yellow areas that are away from water. That was wind damage. So there was wind as well as, as water damage. And just some close-ups of the others. Hickory, bearing the brunt is, it's four areas, Hickory, Spring Creek, Imperial Shores, and West Terry Pirate Streets. And the water was primarily bad in there. I would say it's, it was approximately 12 inches higher than what we'd seen in Helane, but that is an approximation. So in total, we had 1,300 residences that sustained water intrusion and/or wind damage. So 1,300 in total. We marked around about 3,200 homes in general, but the others was less than that, so they're black marks. So 159 would sustain what we would deem as the major damage. And then we have got 148, no, sorry, 348 that were minor. So that's kind of the numbers, if anyone is curious of them. And that is everything. We have been, just so everybody does know, we continue to be out there. Our teams have acted as community coordination teams following the IDA, meaning they're going back in there. If, if running into residents, what are your needs? What do you need? We initially had gone out with tarts, gone out with water if anybody needed anything to see. Find out what the needs of the community were. It's an incredibly resilient community. Been through a lot since Irma, Ian, Helane, and then this, this one, Milton. So we do that as well as providing outreach and education. A lot of people are still confused about permitting. So we hand out, Community Development Department has been great. They've, they've been working and provided us a restoration package. They're handing out information so people know who to contact, and the city will work through that process with them. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. That was really thorough.
Thank you. And at this time, we'd like to ask our community partners, one thing I'd like to share, if Andy could come forward with BSU. We actually had a member of BSU staff stationed with us the entirety of the storm. So they were aware of all the issues that were happening as they were happening in real time, which I think was phenomenal in our communication, while they maintained their emergency staff at their plant as well. So there was constant communication among all of us.
Yeah, so for BSU, yes, we do the same type of things. We prepare and do all that, and then the response, and ultimately to the mitigation that Tony was mentioning, the four areas. But part of that plan is that we do have somebody staffed at South Geographical EOC at the fire station there in Benita Grand. And that is, you know, primarily for communication purposes. If things go bad and there's no communication, we have that link. We have the radios that we can contact them and whatnot. So that, that does help. So we activated our team Wednesday in the morning time, and we have staff too that stays at the facility so that, you know, they have to keep running throughout the event, so they're staffed. And as well, so we can get out, you know, quickly afterwards and try to respond to that. So the damage that we had, we had around 18 lift station panels. That's where most of the damage was focused, again, from the storm surge. So 18 panels had some damage or got some sort of water submergence in them, far less than Ian, which was about 60 panels. So what we've been doing is trying to mitigate some of those. And any of the stations mitigated in the past did not have any damage, and we're going to continue to try to do that going forward. But yeah, represent, that was Zach, I don't know, Laura, you were asking, Zach Ewing stayed at the fire, fire station during that for us, for BSU, so.
Do you have any water turned off in town right now?
Right now, there should not be any water turned off, other than if there's one out for boil water notice that's from other damage, not related to the hurricane. So no.
Did you turn the water off at all?
We, we did not turn it off completely. We throttled it down in case for Hickory Boulevard and Benita Beach. And we issued a precautionary boil water notice in case it was breached, that line. It was not. And so we, we increased the volume, opened, opened the valve back up, and rescinded the boil water notice the very next day.
But to clarify, that didn't happen until the evacuation orders were.
That, correct. That was after the evacuation orders.
It was after the evacuation orders were asked.
Yep.
And.
Any other questions?
Well, and the fire department also decreased their water pressure out on the island, just in case. So everybody was working together. It was beautiful.
Yeah, yeah. So we coordinated that with the fire department, let them know that that was the case. And also, as soon as it was restored to full, we'd let them know as well. Yep.
I was just curious. Hickory Shores doesn't have water. At least my unit doesn't have water.
That.
Maybe we didn't pay our bill again.
I'm, I'm not sure. There, there, there was one, there was one condominium I'm aware of out there, and I do not know the name. I was thinking it was Sea Isles. They had a break on their side of the meter. So there was just one that I was aware of that had that. But we don't have it shut off. It's on the customer's side.
Check, yes, Nigel.
Andy's aware of this, but yesterday there was a water main break on West Terry Street. And of course, I got a number of calls from people that the Benita Springs crews had, of course, ruptured the water mains. And just for the record, nothing to do with Benita Springs Utilities. It was a cable crew. And they sat up there for 15 minutes and argued with each other about when or who was going to call Benita Springs Utilities, I guess. But when Benita Springs Utilities found out about it, less than four hours later, everybody had their water, and it was a big break.
Yeah.
Tens of thousands of gallons.
Yes.
But they had it fixed in four hours. Great job, Andy.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask Benita Springs Fire District to come forward. Deputy Chief is here to give us a.
All right.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. Thanks for having us. First of all, I want to thank the city partners, the Sheriff's Department partners, BSU, everybody that was involved. It was information sharing. It was collaborative. It was how it was supposed to work. And I don't think we had any problems. Honestly, it was very smooth. A lot of hurry up and wait. On the fire side, before the storm, I want to thank all the residents and visitors that obeyed the evacuation orders and did leave town. It helped tremendously on all sides. Before the storm, we did give out about 14,000 sandbags, and seven loads of sand were dropped at the station, and it's completely clear, it was completely cleared out before the storm came. So a lot of people were prepared and got ready. We had no real injuries to our staff or any residents in the preparation phase of it all. And once the storm hit, we were hunkered down. We never stopped running calls. We never had a backlog of calls the entire time. We had our crews out there, and we were out there with them. Sheriff's Department was with us. We had a, it was a good night, a good day. As soon as we could, we got out, did windshield surveys on all the damage and all the flooding. And we evacuated our Station 7 on Hickory Island. We took a little bit of water in there. It's almost back to new. We're just waiting on cabinets. So getting it restored, and we'll be back on the beach very soon. Any questions from anybody? Anything specific?
Great job. Great job.
Here I go again. Deputy Chief, thanks. Good to see you here. I want to correct you. You did not give out 14,000 bags. You gave out 16,000, and you had seven truckloads of sand.
Yes.
But somebody put out on the internet and that neither the fire department or the city were prepared. And that was absolutely false. They said that there was only one truckload of sand. So for anybody listening or watching on TV, yeah, it was 16,000 sandbags and seven trucks of sand.
Thank you.
And that's not part of your job.
No, we were ready. A little, there was some sand delayed, and that was a county issue. We did have a vendor ready to go, and the county did show up. So we were, we were ready for backup if the sand didn't show up, so.
Yeah, we had a coordinated mission request for that.
The city and the fire department were ready.
Yes, we were ready.
And further, Station 7, we're told to evacuate, just get out. Well, they came down with a truckload, and they took everything out. So the only thing that needs to be replaced are the cabinets. So the TVs, all the electronics were saved. So those guys just were like, no, we're not waiting for replacement. We're taking the good stuff and we're going.
And it'll be a much shorter turnaround.
Yes, yeah. It'd be great. Again, everybody worked in collaboration. It was wonderful.
Thank you. And now we have Lee County Sheriff's Office with an update for community policing.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lieutenant Rush, bringing with Lee County Sheriff's Office. To touch base, actually, in getting into like the pre-hurricane setup that we initiated. In regards to the sandbags in the sand, there was definitely, we were, we had the ability to actually assist some of the families and stuff like that down on the island. Everybody took heed to the warning, I think is the biggest thing. We were out there on the PAs. We were going in through the streets, every street. Every street that was in evacuation zones A and B had a sheriff's deputy car going down it multiple times on the PA trying to advise these people, there are an evacuation zone. Please take heed to the warning. And I will say that it was extremely successful. All the information that the city put out, all the different entities, there's so many to list. But that combined effort of getting everybody on the same page and saying, hey, listen, this is a hurricane. It's not to be played with. Please leave the area, was immensely successful. We praised, we prestaged our equipment out of the fire department, just like we had planned to. We moved all our kind of allocated resources down here. On top of that, we had a high-water vehicle and a boat on deck, prepared. We were well-prepared for the storm. During the storm, obviously, as the water started to increase, I think it got to the highest point, was at Imperial Shores and Benita Beach Road. We had the road blocked at that point, and we held that. I believe that was Wednesday night to Thursday morning. The water started to recede, and with that, we were teamed up with the fire department, watching it. We had pulled our units off for safety for, I think, only 45 minutes. And that was because we had some extreme gusts of 50 mile an hour plus winds that were taking down very large trees. But having them be able to redeploy instant But having them be able to redeploy instantly, 45 minutes and everybody was back on the road. We had deputies utilizing our four-wheel-drive truck. We were pulling trees out of the road, clearing the road, going in. That way, emergency services or any other entities that need to get access to those areas are well-prepared. Obviously, the power loss, so they're not running across trees or anything of that nature. I would say that we didn't have a call log, just to touch base just with the fire department. Most of the time in hurricanes, obviously, we have that backed-up call log of people that didn't evacuate that way to the last minute. Now they're trying to get assistance and we can't respond. We didn't have that, not this time. Everybody evacuated. We were able to respond to calls. I want to say there was only maybe a handful of calls and some of them were just wellness checks for people that had lost power during the storm. And we were still able to get to them utilizing our high-water vehicles and make contact with those residents and make sure they were safe. Everybody, just the communication, I can't, I've been down here for a long time. I worked for the agency for a long time. I would say the communication down here in Bonita Springs with the city and all that, Lee DOT, EOC, Lee County, I mean, everyone. It was just, it was phenomenal. Everybody was on the same page. If you needed something, it was here. And just the recovery efforts have been phenomenal. The checkpoint that we initiated at Barefoot Beach and Bonita Beach Road, just because the road was impassable. That was one of the main roadways that was impassable after the hurricane. Most of the roads were impassable due to high water. Hickory was impassable, obviously, due to the pictures. That was an awesome presentation by Tony, kind of showing what exactly we were dealing with down there. Some places, four to five feet of sand. It was kind of wild. So we were able to kind of secure that area. It's a very nice turn point. We worked well with Collier County too, because obviously that leads right into their area. They were on point with us. We worked together with them as well. It offered the residents of that area to get back at least. And having the extra deputies there, having the extra resources that the city provides to Lee County Sheriff, like working together with that relationship for the Bonita Springs Community Policing Unit makes it effective. Having that extra deputy to where it's not a checkpoint where I have a roadblock sign and I'm like, hey, listen, you can't come to your house. You got to turn around. I got to get traffic out of here. It's not. It's a communication. It's, hey, listen, we understand what you're going through. We're trying to work to get things together. We wanted you to get to your house. If you park your car and you get down here, we'll even try to give you a ride. We transported dozens and dozens of citizens back to their houses to be able to kind of do a damage assessment themselves and do it safely. That was the big thing. That was why we had to shut down the road. If they were with us, we could transport them safely. And even sometimes in that, we had to kind of pull back on it because it was just becoming too much of an issue. And that was our major concern, was everybody's safety. But it went off without a flaw. I would say it was a very good job done by everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Yes, Fred.
Yeah. I had several residents call me and leave voicemails. And I tried to explain it to them, but I think you could reinforce it. They were all upset that on Thursday, that we didn't have a policeman or deputy at each traffic light that wasn't working. I tried to explain to them that half the lights in Lee County weren't working. I also said the Lee County Sheriff has higher priority things that they need to use their manpower for. But you might say something to kind of, because it'll go out on TV. I'm hoping they listen to it.
No, and we do. That's obviously a serious safety concern. We try to prioritize manner. Our first concern is prioritizes life. We want to make sure that we can get our resources out into these people's homes that were flooded. Say you don't have somebody that evacuates. Say you have somebody that's in a house. We still had basically wellness checks coming in from people that lived out of state, wanting to check on their loved ones. That's going to take priority. Somebody possibly being in danger, somebody possibly being left in a house or stranded is going to take priority. Once we start to pull back, obviously, and we're working with, it's not just the sheriff's office, we're working with everybody. Lee County DOT, trying to prioritize what lights we need and communicate that information. Because there's a big difference between, you know, not that none of them are insignificant, but there's a big difference between the light out at Barefoot Beach and Bonita Beach Road or Bonita Beach Road and 041, or Bonita Beach Road and 41. So we communicate that. And it's good for the citizens, communicate to the sheriff's office, hey, the light's out here. What can we do to this, get this done? And then we provide that to DOT to get the generators out there, try focusing on restoring power in that specific location.
So that is part of the coordination we had with Lee County staff, DOT constantly on prioritizing intersections that are most heavily traveled to get the generator to.
And then if you compare Bonita Beach Road traffic, lights being out to like a, one of the other second, third worst roads and, you know, they get, you're going priority of which road is the worst. There's two other ones that have more traffic on it than...
We had to look at the prioritization of roads that were impassable, that we didn't have anyone effectively try to pass a road.
And also, weren't you running patrols to make sure there wasn't people getting their house broke into and all that?
Absolutely. So right after, when we were trying to prioritize that, and our first engagement, obviously, is going out to check on people. Secondly, we're checking the businesses to make sure everything's secure.
I believe my memory serves me right. We had one accident and that's better than it usually is.
So I think, I want to say we had a minor fender mender and one accident at almost all of our intersections that still were without power during it. And the success of that is based on the communication. Communication is key. I know the city was pushing out on their social media, this is how you conduct business at an intersection that's without power. We were pushing out the same thing on our pages to try to inform everyone. It's just getting, it's different. It's not the norm. So obviously, there's struggles. But the prioritization was just to make sure that other places were safely passable because they took more residents.
Good. Thank you.
And we did coordinate with the sheriff's office and the administration of Fort Myers Beach on a continuous effort of a curfew. So both the curfew was put in place and lifted simultaneously by just both jurisdictions, which was very helpful in the enforcement of the curfew for them, allowing people an opportunity to secure their properties before we opened up the roadway.
Do you have anything else?
We do. We have more.
Okay. Thank you.
So Laura Taylor, Communications Director, has an update and the outreach we did pre-, post-storm and also the continued outreach regarding the need for permits as well.
There you go. How are we doing on permits? Are we getting even happy?
John Donmore will be out here shortly after this.
It's not the one. It's hurricane outreach. So we're just going to talk a little bit about the outreach that we did. I know Tony did a great job of covering some of that. And I do want to echo everyone's sentiments that we worked very well together. All the departments really worked as a team. All of our partners worked as a team. And it really helped us to make sure to dispute any rumors or anything like that that might be out there during the storm. To start, we did outreach, as soon as he gets that up, I'll catch it up. But the city does hurricane preparedness messaging, starting in April every year. This outreach continues through hurricane season. For Hurricane Milton, all right, well, we're close. We'll do it there. We did 13 e-blasts to approximately 35,000 email addresses, 112 social media posts, 12 press releases, a press conference, and five public service announcements. Types of information that we put out were about shelters, evacuations, how to connect with us, how to receive information, debris, and permitting. So some of the information that was really important to us before, during, and after the storm was to make sure that we got information to our residents about what kind of permitting they needed if they had damage to their home for hurricanes. And we worked very closely with our media partners to get that information out. As you'll see here, this is just a couple of them, but we had Naples Daily News, Wink News, and Cape Coral Breeze cover that for us. So we were happy with that. So out of the 112 social media posts, we shared information about know your evacuation zone, stay in place, conditions of the roadways, curfews. You'll see our mayor there. He did a public service announcement for us. That's really helpful when we can work with our counselors right after a storm and give them scripts and head down to whatever area we need to cover so that others don't have to drive and see these areas. We can get them out and get them on film and post those to our socials and let people see the conditions without having to drive down. So we really appreciate that you were all available to help us with that. We did, as soon as the storm passed, put out information about waiving permit fees for Hurricane Milton restoration. We also talked about city facility closures and reopenings. We did create a city webpage for Hurricane Milton. That's still up. We're currently still updating that. Our metrics, as you can see for the website, close to the storm, they increased quite a bit. We got up to about 40,000 hits on the website. And then we're continuing to coordinate information with all of our partners. We did attend daily joint information calls with Lee County and about 60 other organizations for our public information officers. We coordinated with our local media partners. And again, we just really appreciate all of our teams. I mean, Tony's team going door to door, John's team going out giving packets, and then all of our team that helped with the communication information. And we'll just continue to post information as we recover.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'd like Community Development to come forward and give a brief update on permitting.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Learned my lesson last time and I printed a copy out and brought my glass so I can read these. So a lot of the questions that we're getting first off is, do I need a permit if I sustain damage during the storm? Generally, the answer is just yes. If you've got a question, call us. We'll walk you through what needs to be done and how it needs to be done. But if you're asking, do I need a permit? Yes, you need a permit. We are, with exceptions, handling improvements through restoration permits. And what that means is whatever types of damage you sustained, we try to put that all together in one permit so that way we know the total cost. If we have to worry about 50% rules on your particular property, those issues can be addressed through that worksheet. We're able to get you through. And you know what you're able to do and what needs to be done at one time. So you don't come in and get an air conditioning permit, then come back in and get a roofing permit, come back in and get interior remodel permit. They're all done at one time. So we try to make it as simple as possible, try to walk everybody through the process. We try to take that extra time because this is one of those times where everybody gets to come down and meet their building department and their community development department. And it's not usually their best day. So we try to take that extra minute or two to walk somebody through so they truly understand what we're doing, why we're doing it. And God willing, when they leave, they feel a little bit better about where they're going in the future. So... Getting on with the presentation, what I've done here is basically update a lot of the permit and fee waiver information that I've been providing you on a regular basis, going back to Hurricane Ian. This first slide shows the last three months of permit fee waivers. As you can see, on October, we only are accurate through the 20th. So that's not a whole month. That's just through a couple of days ago when we ran the report. The second slide gets into permit fee waivers by year, to no one's surprise. A couple of months after Hurricane Ian hit, getting into 2023, that was the bulk of the waivers. We still haven't done too bad this past year. And I would imagine those numbers are going to keep going up now that we've had a couple of close calls and events. This next slide starts getting into the particular types of permits and their value. So as you can see, you know, building residential, that tends to be where the bulk of it is. But the commercial buildings, that's not far behind. And also, not surprisingly, our trades, which tend to be the most voluminous permits, are also up there in terms of value. So... This one is hard to read and that's my fault because I made the GIS guy create this slide specifically. So when you're dealing with this, this is the type of permits by the past three months to kind of let you see what's happening over the short term, what's been coming in the door, how many of those are there. Residential permits, obviously, pretty high. No one's real surprised. And this goes back to the same type of slide going by year. So we're looking basically at almost 2,900 permits that have been included in this list. And like I said, the trades always stand out. Mr. Mayor, you always like to know how many permits, numbers-wise, and which type of permits are coming in. And this slide is for you. So as you can see, it breaks it down not only by the type of permit, but by the year and the number of those permits that have come in during that time period in the grand total. So when we're going back all the way to Hurricane Ian, we're really looking at just about 2,900 permits as of October 20th that have come in that have been specifically designated as hurricane restoration. So... Does anyone have any questions or...? Yes, sir.
John, question on demolition because it's the one that's what gets people confused. That's truly demolition of the structure, correct? It's not tearing out drywall, two feet of drywall, something like that. And do folks need a permit to tear out two feet of drywall?
It's not so much the tear out as the replacement. So I think it's 17 square feet. Oh, boy. You'll be here the exact number. But there is a square footage that delineates...
I brought the expert with you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Apologize for the interruption, John. We like to get things right the first time around. The removal of wet or damaged materials from a structure post-event does not require a permit because we want those things out prior to, before additional damages such as mold set in and occur. But when we are addressing post-storm events and these things in the flood zones, there is, all repairs require a permit regardless of the quantity or volume of the drywall, for example. In a traditional Blue Skies Day, there is an exception in the building code for less than 100 square feet of drywall for minor repair and maintenance. But that is not applicable for flood zone properties and especially post-event. So get the wet out, take your photographs, get your evidence for your insurance claims and your permitting process. However, prior to reinstalling or repairing any of those items, contact us for your permit.
Yes, Fred.
When you go over the fact you have to have permits, does somebody tell the people, like she did, what things they can do without a permit?
Yes. A lot of these, a lot of these properties, they either have a contractor and they come in with an application that's ready to go and they don't need a lot of explanation. But others that come in that really hold their hands up and just want you to walk them through the process, yes, we generally go on-site to see what the condition is. Based upon the conditions of the site, we tell them what can be done and what can't be done, certain ways to handle permitting and how they're supposed to walk through that reconstruction process.
That what they can do is important, John.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, this is a dumb question, but why do we have to permit everything? What is the advantage to the people to have to go to another government entity to get permission to work on their own house?
Well, that deals somewhat in philosophy, but getting into the real world, what has happened is, how I explained earlier, most people don't deal with the building department on a daily basis. Most people do not build houses. Most people don't go in and do their own electrical work. They don't have a license for that. That's not what they understand. So if you are a homeowner or if you're a property owner, the state of Florida has set up these codes in essence to protect you from people that will come in and do things that would not necessarily be safe or beneficial to you. So when a building inspector or a plans reviewer is looking at a set of plans or goes out to a property to take a look at what's been done, it's not to accuse you of doing something wrong. It's to make sure that the work that's being performed is done in a manner that does not create a safety hazard for you or anybody else that lives there. And even with that process in place, it is not uncommon for poor work to be done and try to get passed off as something that's consistent with the code.
What?
There's one additional thing that's real important. Your insurance policy on your house clearly states that if you have a loss later and it's in the area of unpermitted work, even if it's to code, it's not covered. So that's another good reason you want to get a building permit. You don't want to do anything that would jeopardize a future loss because you got all kinds... And they go in now in a big deal like we're having and check retroactively to see, did this guy get a permit for this new sliding door? Did he get this? Did he get that? And if they didn't, they're up the creek without a tow.
And Mr. Mayor, it's also important to hire licensed and insured repair folks. So actually, I think it's a law.
Yes, ma'am. It is.
Does every, does every permit get permitted inspected?
Uh, yes.
To make sure it's done right.
Correct.
Now, also, one of the advantages to doing this is that the tax man knows that the property is up to valuable, is the value of the property is up to normal.
Correct. But that's...
But the real key is safety.
So, that's kind of their own deal.
Okay. And let's say somebody has a damage and they say, okay, I want to fix this part, but I want to add a swimming pool over here at the same time. Do we get two permits or...?
In this particular case, if they're saying that part of their damage was caused by hurricane and the rest of it was going to be improvements, yes, sir, there would be two separate permits.
Okay. Permits are coming in, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We're not going to have FEMA have a problem with us this time.
Well, we're continuing to coordinate with FEMA through this process. Post-Haleen, we provided an update to Region 4 Director on our activities and we'll also be providing the same update regarding our response to Hurricane Milton. But I would suggest that following Hurricane Andrew back in the 90s was the establishment of the Florida Building Code, which is also through the Florida Legislature requirements. And it's a protection measure for our whole entire state so that we're hopeful that people are in buildings that they are safe to be in. And that is the purpose of the establishment of the code. And it is stricter than other states, but we also, we also are trying to be more resilient and account for the weather that we receive or the inclement, you know, conditions we receive. So it's a requirement of safety as the number one priority.
Thank you for your explanation.
And if you see the newer homes versus the older homes in areas that have been impacted, there is a substantial difference in how well newer construction survives compared to older construction. Oh, and I did, of course, the one thing I wanted to remind myself to bring, I forgot, we are creating cards now that have a lot of our flood information on there so that we're able to hand those out. So it's got websites, a little bit of the process, some general information. So if people have some questions once they leave the office, at least they know where to go if they want to try to do some research before they call back. So we do have those available.
Is there something they could get online, John, that they could click on a link and go right to that?
So we do have a flood page set up on the community development website. City also goes to the same page. And it goes into some of the questions on what is the 50% rule, what is, you know, what needs a permit, general type of information like that. It's always advisable to read some of that before you come in, but we have people that are somewhat knowledgeable, no knowledge, it makes no difference. If they come in with questions, we just try to walk them through that process. So they walk out with what they need.
So we don't have a permitting for dummies? Yet.
We're working on it.
50%, that's very confusing as far as I'm concerned. Now, 50% to repair it in today's dollar compared to a house that was built 20 years ago, how do you balance out what the 50% value against what?
Those values are established by the Lee County Property Appraiser and there's a formula for that as well. There's a depreciation formula fit into that as well and there's current, every year, those numbers are adjusted. And under, under the FEMA regulations, that is the required valuation we use.
As part of what we're submitting and what we follow in terms of policy, we establish where we go primarily and secondarily for property values.
Does the property value evaluation separate the land from the property?
Correct.
Of the improvements?
It separates everything that is not included from that 50% rule from portions of the site that are included.
Okay. Well, you have anything else?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I want the last word, but go ahead.
Matt Feeny will give you an update on our public works activities for the storm.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, you know, everyone's kind of touched on the sand that was on Hickory Boulevard. It was an extraordinary amount of material that was, the storm placed there. Lee County has done a yeoman's work in removing that at unbelievable speed, which has really allowed a lot of this recovery to kind of happen much quicker than we experienced in the past. So we can't thank them enough. We gave them probably their earliest assessment, Arlene and myself, when we were driving out there as daybreak was happening and calling the DOT Director and letting them know, you got a, got a big problem here. And they responded accordingly. We've been working, cleared the city roads. Unfortunately, we usually get the mud, the county gets the sand. The mud sticks around, the sand kind of, if you can put the effort to it, you can get rid of it. So we've, we have cleared the city roads, including North Hickory, of sand and we've been working on the mud problem. It takes a little bit more. You have to wash the streets, you have to broom them. We've done all of that and we're getting that, that animal pretty well contained out on the beach at this point and pretty confident with our recovery efforts there. We've been picking up debris. We had started with Hurricane Haleen, we've continued through with Milton. Right now, the focus has been on, on the flood damage and the crews have been kind of working in the areas that have been affected by that. Right now, they're, they're in the streets along the river corridor between Pennsylvania and West Terry Street, picking up some of that stuff. So, so that effort's been ongoing. And then, not to be the pigeon of doom, but we did survey the beach with a engineering company, same as we did after Hurricane Ian, which you may recall, the survey work that we did after Hurricane Ian opened up a $4 million funding opportunity from the state. And we were poised to build protective berms this week or next. Contractor has mobilized in. Unfortunately, Ian has changed the dynamic of that project. We're still assessing that, but the survey results have come back and we've lost 30 to 35 feet in the South Benita portion, which was not where the normal renourishment project is. 30 to 35 foot of shoreline has been lost to erosion. So, we're assessing what that, those next steps will be. We'll be coming back, working with the contractor and the county and the engineer to bring you some recommendations probably at the next meeting. It will most likely change the scope of what this project will be, but we're still getting our hands around that. But we have the first and most important piece, which is the survey to understand what happened. And in this case, it eroded some shoreline pretty significantly.
Looks to me as if a sandbar that used to be there is way out there now. The sandbar is done.
Not as significant either, so...
Big pile of sand.
It's a major impact. We've got our hands around it. We have the key piece of information we needed, which is what has happened. And we're working on the, how do we react to that? The good news is our contractor is here. You know, the, the equipment to do this project is on its way from the Gulf Coast, pending some weather. So, so we're going to be able to restore this, like, you know, in an unprecedented timeframe, but we have to...
They weren't going to start at Lover's Key?
They're going to start on Benita Beach.
It's different.
I'm sure you've heard that, yeah. Before, it was maybe Lover's Key, but it's going to be Benita Beach.
The north end or anywhere?
We're, we're working through those issues right now. The storm has certainly changed what this project's going to look like.
Sure has. I'm glad you're on top of it. Yes, Chris.
Do we anticipate we're going to have the beach restored by the end of the year or shortly thereafter?
You know, it's, it's a little early to say. What I could tell you is, it's two weeks after a hurricane and you're going to have a dredging contractor on-site, which is unbelievable. So it'll be restored faster than probably any community in Florida has ever restored a beach unless the dredging contractor was already physically there.
Are they going to have to dredge, bring in sand?
We're still working on the details.
Still working on the details, okay. All right, I got you.
We're hopeful that we'll have an update at the next meeting.
At, oh, the meeting in, first meeting in November?
First meeting in November, yes. That would be our goal.
Okay.
And then, last but not least, I would be remiss if I did not thank Lee County Government for making this one of the most seamless operations that we had, led by Dave Harner, who actually incorporated Charlotte County and Collier County into our daily briefings. Additionally, he incorporated a legislative update, so we were able to communicate with Senator Pasadoma, Senator Martin, Representative Botana continuously throughout the storm. So they were able to receive our updates in real time. Additionally, Lee County DOT was immediate, as everyone has said, was an immediate response to Hickory Boulevard and the amount of sand. And we, I also would like to thank the, the manager of Fort Myers Beach who stayed in constant communication and providing a seamless operation of the curfew, which I think was alleviated the confusion for residents immensely and also the operation of allowing employees to go back and forth and residents. And then the cooperation of Benita Beach residents and Fort Myers Beach residents. If, if so, if a Benita Springs resident wanted a Fort Myers Beach pass because they were on the north end, their government was reciprocal in providing that beach pass to them with identification. So, thank you again to Chief DeWitt and the Fire District, BSU and LCSO. It, it takes a village, so. And if Tony didn't share with you, his staff did stay overnight, several nights at the rec center so that as soon as conditions were at first light, they were able to hit the ground running every single day. So I appreciate that. We had Brenda actually at the EOC and she made some great new friends with Cape Coral and some other neighboring sister cities. And then finance staff was here to keep us pushing along and answering telephone calls. We never, we only had a brief moment of, a brief, I think, not even 12 hours of voicemail and the rest was, if there was a voicemail, they were called within a two-hour time period of calls, returned calls. And the communications staff, which did stay with us embedded at the Fire District. And Nicole was not able to, for a family reason, be here to this evening. She was in constant communications with Neil at the Wonder Gardens through the process. As of right now, all of our park facilities except for Beach Park, which is at the north end of Hickory Boulevard, and Cullum's Trail are the only two facilities that have not been cleaned, grubbed and reopened to the public at this time.
Okay, I'd like to mention that some people don't like government. This is why, this is what government can do and what they're good at. This is why we have government. When we have disasters, so all pull together, the whole, everybody in America pulls together when there's a problem. And I'm so proud of this city and the people involved and the city manager and all the staff. I'm so proud of you all and I thank you all for all your efforts and we'll keep up with the good work and maybe we'll have another storm soon. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think I'm the only one on council that was on council when Irma hit. I was over at Station 4 a lot. Where we were then versus here is we're light years ahead. It was, it was, it was good, but it wasn't nearly as good as it is now.
We're getting practice.
And also, the fact that Tony's putting out these weather reports and all that is what we should have been doing all the way along. So I applaud him for doing that. Everybody was doing everything as good as they can. Now, were we perfect? Probably not, but we were close to perfect. Last person that was perfect got crucified.
Mayor and Councils? Any words? Have any, Fred?
No, not really.
What, Jamie? How's the Fire Department doing in Hickory?
Well, like Jason Brode had mentioned, they did receive a little bit of water, but the firemen on duty that day did remove a lot of the contents inside the building. So hopefully, they'll be back up and running very quickly. And I would like to reiterate what everybody has said of how much, you know, I, you know, was part of all of this, but yet I saw how everyone communicated and, including the residents, listening to, you know, heeding the warnings to evacuate and it was, and then also removing contents from houses, moving cars to higher ground. It just really was incredible to see everybody working together. Unfortunately, we had to learn the hard way, but I think that working together and we have come a long way. And I hope we do not have another storm to have to go through this once again. It's pretty unfortunate, we've had so many at this point. And I also wanted to talk about, last night I attended the Downtown Alliance meeting and the Benita Springs Elementary School did a presentation last night. And I spoke to the principal, Cynthia Hernandez, and she had had a meeting this past week with the architect and they had a new rendering of the school that included Building 1. I'm not sure if it included 2 also, but she said it did include that. They are supposedly breaking ground the day after school ends, within hopes of the two-story building being built and ready to go for the following school year after that. So, with that being said, I know that the school district did receive our letter that we formulated and the council staff put together. I feel as if it's really important that as council members, residents, staff, that we really do some outreach, see if we can get our meeting set up because apparently they're moving forward. She didn't know if this was anything set in stone, but I think it's important matter. I know that the storm has, you know, of course, first and foremost at this point, but this is pretty important to all of us. So some outreach, if council can do that, I think is important at this point to find out what is going on and trying to get our meeting set up.
Thank you. Jessie, you want to add? I'm Laura Carr.
Oh, sure. I also want to just thank staff, who was phenomenal, in that I would get a phone call from Arlene at 9:00 AM on a Sunday morning. I mean, talk about like mixing up your, you know, what day is it? Because she never calls on a Sunday morning. And she and Matt were out and had been out for a while and then Laura Taylor would like send a text on a Saturday evening and I'm like, oh my gosh, you know? And Tony, I loved your updates and it was wonderful that all of the departments worked together. And unfortunately, we've had so many hurricanes, we're getting better and better and better. We're done improving for this year, I think, because we can do it in our heads or ask the computer, what more could we do? But if you think about our community, we were bombarded with, oh my gosh, well, first we had tropical rains and gust storms before Haleen. And then we got Haleen and it really didn't hit us as much as we thought and it moved on, but Haleen killed over 260 people across six states. It was wicked. So, it's just so hard when the cone is so big and you hear day after day after day when it's far away that it's, it's going to hit, it's going to hit. Well, is it going to hit Tampa? Is it going to hit Marco Island or right here center Benita Springs, as we were with Irma? So, we get all this constant barraging of disaster and then Milton. And I tell you, Milton, I prepared and my husband and I were a little bit more concerned because Milton could have been Irma and Ian together. It could have been the monster of a storm with the surge and the wind and we had just had it. And unfortunately, Haleen, well, in pre-Haleen, tropical rains and storm, hit the vulnerable areas. And again, Haleen hit the vulnerable areas and then Milton hit the vulnerable. And so, because we had seen Hickory Boulevard covered with sand before. Thank you, Ian. So it's just the resiliency and the positive nature of our citizens, we just have to say thank you and we are blessed to live here, blessed to have Governor DeSantis and Senator Rick Scott, who have our backs, and Congressman Byron Donalds, who is down here focusing on, you know, the water and how we're getting help and Rick Scott's on our back with, in his office with FEMA. And FEMA is being a lot more transparent, for whatever reason, we appreciate it and we appreciate all the help that FEMA is providing us. But again, I just want to say two points to our citizens and 20 points for our staff and, and our fellow departments and collaborations around with... and, and our fellow departments and collaborations around with BSU, sheriff, and fire.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Nigel?
Yes, sir, thank you. I guess, start on a, a negative, sad note. If people aren't aware of the fact, one of our longstanding citizens, somebody who's done so much in our community, lost his wife, Rex Sims, lost his wife's Peggy, and unfortunately, the services this evening. But that family's done so much in our community, and it's a great loss. So I'm sure our condolences all to Steve and their son and their daughter Susan at Heaven Sent. And just a big loss for our community. On a positive note, just a reminder to everybody that November 11th, we're going to have a very upbeat Veterans Day, looking forward to it. General Beam confirmed that he's going to be here, and the Veterans Advisory Board's doing a great job. So I hope everybody will come out at 9:00 AM on Monday, November 11th, and see what Benita Springs is all about. Thank you.
Chris? Yeah, a couple, three things. Deb Orton, the President of BERT, and I met with Senator Pasadena this morning, asking for her advocacy and help in terms of getting the county to, at the table to discuss ways in which we can form a memorandum of understanding between Lee County, Estero, Benita Springs, and Collier County, so that we can move forward with grant applications to the federal government for funds that, to help with the purchase price. Senator Pasadena is more than happy to do that. This is an important project in her mind. Her vision is that one day, we will have a bicycle pedestrian pathway that will run from South Collier County all the way to the Space Coast. And she's not real interested in segmenting it, parcelling out those, the 14.9 miles. But she agrees that the county has to come to the table. And she will be getting together with Senator Martin and making appropriate calls to the Lee County Commission and asking them to sit down and really participate. So that's one thing. Last week, we had a joint meeting between BSU and the Fire District with Community Development and our people to talk about ways in which we could improve the permitting process. I think it tends to be primarily around information, education of the public. As a result of that, we're sorry, we're going back to sort of the old days where we're doing some of the paperwork processing for the Fire District. I'll call it that. It's back to having a memorandum of understanding where, where we will be working with the Fire District. We really can't do that with BSU, because BSU doesn't want to come under the Sunshine Laws. And I, there's legal reasons for that, so I understand that. But Richard Gardner and Andy were there, along with their staff, and so we're making progress. We anticipate not too far in the future, we will, we will actually have stuff up on the websites, a flow chart of how the process works, how all three entities issue permits, what's involved in getting a permit, what definitions are of the permitting process, what a post, what a pre-construction meeting is all about, to make sure that people have a better understanding of the whole process, and, and to try to be more user-friendly for both residents and businesses in Benita Springs. Finally, that, I think about a month ago at one of the meetings, Jesse brought up the idea that, you know, we needed to have better cell service, cellphone service in Benita Springs. We had talked about that in terms of cellphone towers probably a year or so ago. Can't really remember. But now, but now the, the problem is getting, is not getting resolved. I know, for example, in Benita Bay, I, I'm only getting cellphone service because I have an internet connection when I'm in my, my condo. I was with Deb Orton this morning, she's on AT&amp;T. She lost all, and she has a dead spot down here by Bill Smith's appliance store for AT&amp;T. It simply has to get better. So I've, you know, I asked the tech, tech committee to take on a project of doing, a meeting with the, the carriers, to take a look at designing a project to get this done. And what they would like is a resolution passed by council that they can have in their hand when they meet with the carriers and have these discussions that says, here, look, we've got the backing of the city council. This is not a bunch of guys sitting on a, on a committee, not a bunch of concerned citizens, but this is something the city wants to do. So I'm going to ask that staff and Derek draft up some sort of a resolution that the tech committee can use to start the project. I know that we've, in the past, we've had consultants come in and, and tell us the way to go about this. We may come back, the tech may may come back and say, look, we're, we're going to have to have some help in terms of doing this, we may need some budget dollars to carry this out and, and get the people we need in here to help. But I think it's important, I think, you know, we talked about it a long time, it's not getting any better, and we need to move forward on it. So I will be asking for that resolution. So that concludes what I wanted to say. Yes, Nigel.
Jamie, I was just going to ask you a question, if you would. Thank you for going last night, by the way. I guess I'm a little confused, so we had the new principal and the new vice principal there. They're aware of new plans or architecture drawings. I asked the city manager, have we received any response for the letter that we sent?
We did receive a response from the chairman directly to the mayor saying that they were in receipt of our correspondence, but that was right in the middle of the storms. But we have not received another update. That, that they, they did email the mayor, Sam.
Couple weeks ago, yes.
So if they've been making decisions, how do we find out what these decisions are? Because I'd really like to know what's happening with our school.
We can make an inquiry to the project coordinator, Dr. Malloy, so we can do that. I think it's also appropriate, since it was discussed in a community meeting, that you as elected officials have every right to speak to the elected officials of the school board as well, and ask, you know, what, what, what the next steps are, where they are in the process.
So they haven't turned down our request to have a workshop, because that was one of the requests?
They did not turn it down, they just stated that they are in receipt of the course.
Does anybody know whether there's going to be a change at the school board members? There's a vote coming up next week. Maybe, maybe afterwards, we can get a.
But last night, the new principal and the new vice principal were at the Downtown Alliance explaining.
But that's for the school, I'm talking about the school board.
There'll be new people. Superintendent, there are new, yes, the election is coming up.
Mr. Mayor? I would say a good idea would be for Arlene and/or Derek to reach out to the school board. Give them one last opportunity, heads up. Our council's going to start making calls to all the board members if we don't get a response. And then if they don't get a response in 24 hours, we can start calling members.
But the board member's going to change after November 5th?
Yes, yes, they will, after November, yes. We'll have a new superintendent, we'll have one new, two new members.
So we might have some response. Maybe that's why they're holding up, they don't want to do anything until after the election, I don't know.
It's possible. I still think we should put them on the clock to, just have staff reach out and say, hey, final warning, before we start pressuring the board members, we'd love a response from you. And our council's asked you to get 24, 48 hours to give us a response to our request for a meeting. And if they don't do it in 24 or 48 hours, we start talking to our colleagues on the, on the school board. And I think that'll probably get them to do it, they'll do it. As soon as they hear that, they don't want that.
Does the school board answer to the state of Florida?
No, they answer to us, no. Ultimately, if there's an issue, like if somebody had to be removed or something like that, the governor ultimately, but essentially, they only answer to the voters.
They're, they're a county entity.
Because they get money from, they get, the state gets plenty of money from them. They should have some control over that. We'll just keep working on this.
Do we need a, do you guys need a?
No, I think, I think there's enough direction to, we can reach out to our contact on the staff, and then we can go from there.
I think you should reach out to Malloy, just straight to him, you to him. Copy Rooney, just so they know we're not playing.
And to clarify, she did state that it was on the renderings, but she still wasn't sure if that meant it was staying. So that's why I said it's important that we start reach, reaching out again. Because as you said, they're proceeding, it sounds like.
They're doing something.
Okay. Early voting is going on, it started Monday from 10 o'clock till 6 o'clock up by the tax collector's office up near Spring Creek. People standing, 50 people in a, in a row all day. People want to vote, and they're voting. So there's, I don't know, 25,000 voters in Lee, in the city Benita Springs now. So maybe in the afternoon, the line might be a little, little less, but they're moving along quite quickly. If you want to vote early, I don't know what it'd be like on the 5th, but please vote. It's the American way, it's our government, and we are the people, so, thank you. Anything else?
Public comment?
Public comment? We got two public, they're muted tonight, okay.
Mayor and Council, there is one thing I did want to comment on. I know Councilmember Forbes mentioned the staff's response, you know, Hurricane Irma. But one thing that's also significantly changed is the prioritization of this mayor and council to storm and to resiliency. So the fact that you've placed, you know, tho, those, those items in our budget that help us do the job we do, the fact that you hold public workshops, and the fact that you have the outreach that you do, that is night and day from where we started. And yes, it's, it's practice that I don't really want to take anymore, but, but the support that we receive is phenomenal. And so we cannot do our jobs without your support. So that is, that is, I do want to say that that is night and day, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Public comment, we're in? All right, we're adjourned, thank you.